Creepy as we're.
The only thing several people I know have questions is on the new vacation policy. So it's very, very generous. And I'm okay with it.
Do you want to keep good qualified meeting?
Yes, I'm okay with it.
Which we do.
You know, they hit two makes.
She does the first one. If I do the second one, we'll just keep it that way.
Yeah, so I ask.
I know, so if you ever start meeting on the first, I can.
Yeah, I think you missed two or three.
I did.
I've missed one.
I'll rise, I'll call this meeting to order. I want to welcome everybody. We'll start with the invocation by Jack.
Thanks, Jack.
That's great. By the God, we thank you for blessing us with the United States of America. I thank you for the process in which we determine our leaders and that it provides for peaceful, orderly transition of power. The citizens of the United States are at a great crossroads. I pray we will work together, respect, and love each other. We, the members of Warsaw City Council, meet tonight to discuss the city's business. I pray you will guide and direct our discussions. In Jesus' name, I pray.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jack.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Play ball.
I want to welcome everybody this evening. First item is the approval of the minutes from our October 21st meeting.
That seems like I'm two months ago.
It does seem like I'm all right. Any questions or concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I move we accept the minutes from last meeting, October 21st, 2024.
Motion by Jack, is there a second?
A second.
There's a second by Diane. Any further discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Welcome everybody again. There are no reports oral written. Oh, wait a minute, we do have two. And related to that, I want to thank everybody for their patience as I try to navigate. I know you guys are starting to transition to this new platform. I appreciate everybody's patience. We do have two items, reports oral and written. The first one is the October fund report. Lynn?
If you guys had a chance to look at it, answer any questions you may have, but everything was brought into me.
Any questions? Okay, that will take us to a report by Jeremy. I think it's an annual report. Jeremy, thanks for sticking around. Did you get to go home or not?
No, I've had some other things to work on that you'll probably see at your next council meeting, so figured I'd get a jump on it now.
Thanks for all the work you're doing and again, your presence tonight. What are we looking at here?
So a new state requirement is to complete this, what they call an annual spending plan. So they had a boilerplate kind of spending plan that they came up with. Most of this is probably in your reports you get earlier, but this is for 2025, so the previous reports kind of report the previous year's activity. This report is going to report the upcoming year's activity. Given the way they've set it up, what I've done is basically put everything in all the redevelopment districts budgets and put it as being spent. Now, that's unlikely to happen, but the way they've created the law, it says that any money you're going to spend next year, I have to tell you about it now. So I'm telling you now about the money we're going to spend next year, because I have a crystal ball. So for whatever reason, in their infinite wisdom, this is what they came up with. So you'll have all these different categories. So it says debt payments, so you can see the debt payments and total debt payments that are being paid. Capital expenditures would be across every TIF district, so when you see that 5.145 million, that is every dollar budgeted for 2025. Now, are we going to spend every dollar budgeted? Probably not, and rarely do we. We will spend that money on projects as we prepare and get them ready to be constructed in any given year. We do have some projects that we're working on next year, so some of that may get spent out next year on those projects, i.e., Anchorage Road is expected to bid next year, so some of this money would be targeted for the Anchorage Road project next year. So you can kind of go through each one of these line items. Some have zeros where we don't, we're not spending any money on those. Professional expenses, once again, that's $770,000. That's every professional dollar that's budgeted for next year. Not likely to spend that, but we do have a couple of big contracts for Anchorage Road is one of those, construction inspection that we will sign. That contract hopefully will be an 80/20 match, but, so we'll get some of that, 80% of that money back, but we do need to sign that contract. Operating expense would just be expenses for employees or any operating expense associated with my department in terms of the redevelopment. That money also reflects money coming out of the Redevelopment General as well, so that'd be 108,000. Bond proceeds, so I've estimated pretty high here because I don't want to come back and amend it for every time we go over it, but we do had, we did issue the GAKI bonds, that funds, some of that funds will be expended out in 2025. It is our intent to issue a bond for the Owens Project or Millworks, so sometime early next year, we'll be issuing those bonds, and some of those funds would be paid out in 2025 as well. The only money that would comply, or would be property tax levy would be the Redevelopment General Fund, so that total funds for that department or that budget is shown in that expenditures from property tax levy would be the 292,180. So if you looked at the Redevelopment General budget, you would see that the total possible expenditure next year would be 292,180, so we're showing that. It's unlikely, once again, that we'll expend all that money out, but if, for every dollar we expend next year, it has to be in this report. If it's not in this report, then I have to come back before you every time to amend the plan, and I'd prefer not to do that. So 2025 total expenditures has 12,593,067. Highly unlikely that we'll expend that much money, for one. I don't know what the Millworks bond issue is going to be yet, so we probably won't get to that 5 million cap. The GAKI bond did go for sale and was awarded, and it's roughly just over 1.9 million for that. The Owens is expected to be in that 2, 2.5 range, so that'll give you an idea of where we'll be at in bond issuance. So this is just for your information, it will get uploaded before December 4th or 1st? Okay, December 1st.
It might be done tomorrow.
Assuming that it works, but I haven't heard whether or not it works yet.
It appears to be working.
It appears to be working.
It appears to be working.
But if there's any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Jeremy, item 0, other anticipated expenditures, the total there, it's 12,593,067. I'm seeing instead of a comma, just for the record, you want that to be a comma there, correct?
Yes.
It's 12 million, like you said?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want to bring me a corrected copy down tomorrow, then?
Yeah, I'll change that.
Good catch, Mayor.
Jeremy, another example, appreciate all your work here. Last week, I told the council I was working with Jeremy on several different projects, different departments, and his ability to help me navigate not only all those needs, but Baker Tilly on the line, just an incredible resource, and then all the work that you do for not only the whole city, but now my office. I appreciate it.
Thanks. So you don't need to vote on it?
No. Okay.
As far as I know, I didn't say that in the language, but just identify that it's been given to you.
The presentation?
Yep.
Okay. Thanks a lot, Jeremy. Appreciate it. There were no questions for Jeremy?
Yeah.
Okay. There is no unfinished business. I think I'm looking at that correctly. And that takes us to new business. Ordinance 2024-11-01, Hal's been at work for several months now. He'll share with you that work alone with his own board related to.
What I got in front of you, yeah, is to propose an increase for 2025. Last increase was 2021. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it. Basically, it comes down to about 4%, except for a couple of areas. One area I was lacking in that seems to be, we do more and more as disinterments, and for us to bring a loved one out of the ground takes quite a bit of work, so I bumped that up accordingly to do that. There's the other one, I guess I'd say would be large, is you're after four. Border regions has a rule that we do not bury after four, but if they come after four, do a, be late, whatever, we have to, $2,000 fee, but they'll have to pay for that. Any questions or?
Hal, just for the record, how long's it been since you increased fees?
2021.
Sorry?
2021.
2021.
Yeah, so we increased. Concrete's going up, everything's starting to go up, and I just felt it was, before previous, we went longer, and so we kind of took it longer on the money, and I thought now is best to do it about every four years to take a look at. Yes, sir?
You know, it's never a wise move to assume. I was assuming, tell me if I'm right or wrong, that you have two prices here, resident, non-resident. Non-resident is someone who does not live in the city of Warsaw?
Correct. If you pay city taxes, you're a resident.
That's what I figured.
If you live inside of Warsaw, anything like that, you would get the lesser rate.
Okay.
Is what it is. Because you're paying city taxes, we do, like I say, give you a break on everything. Yeah.
Thank you. It sure does say that. Anyone who has city trash pickup?
That's how we determine. It's easiest for us, because some will live close, but they won't have city trash picked up, so we know they're not paying taxes, so it's just an easy way for us to determine if they are a resident or non-resident. You will see in there the babies we left alone. If you look at the old ones and the new one, I think you have a copy back and forth, we take care of that, so the board knows if a young family can't afford the lot, basically that, we don't charge an opening fee for a child, for a baby, but if they can't afford the lot, the city of Warsaw owns the lot. We don't charge them for the lot for the babies. And we also set their stones for free to purchase them.
Looking at the first page after his memo, you're seeing current realities and then proposed, and then, correct me if I'm wrong, Hal, you then have the ordinance 2024-11-01 on the last page.
Which I believe it has to go through two readings, correct? This is, my board has approved it, but this will be up to you guys if you want to do this or not. We went over it at our last board meeting.
Was the vote unanimous?
Yes, it was. Yes, it was. They totally understand why we're doing it. Like I say, I can't make my full budget, but it's just do my part for the tax rates and with everything going up. Compared, it's hard to understand, and the mayor's asked me to compare it to somebody for a city cemetery our size. There's not a lot of them around. You get into cemeteries our size, they're privately owned, so where you see where I went up to 600 for resident in Fort Wayne, that's 5,000 for that lot. Follow me, and like, an opening is 600, theirs 2,500 to 3,000, so, which makes sense, because they have to meet their budget, and I don't. So just to give you an idea, it's hard to compare to a municipality cemetery our size.
Any questions for Hal? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve on first meeting.
I move we accept ordinance number 2024-11-01.
Motion to approve. Thanks, Jerry. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jergen. Any further discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, seven to zero. Thanks, Hal.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Hal.
Jeremy, transfer request. Thank you.
Yes, just asking to transfer funds in two different budgets, one being the Redevelopment General and the other being Winona Interurban. These funds are to cover ongoing costs associated with the Warsaw Chemical Property Acquisition and the GAKI project closing, in addition to some expenses for the Marsh property, requesting to transfer 35,000 from improvements other than building in Redevelopment General to professional services, and then 5,000 from capital outlays in Winona Interurban to professional
Questions for Jeremy? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the request.
I make a motion, we approve Resolution 2024-11-02.
Motion to approve by Diane, is there a second?
I'll second that.
There's a second by Cindy. Any further discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you, Jeremy. You can go home, right? Okay.
Drive carefully.
Yeah, he does have a drive. The next item, Danny, you have two of them. The first one is an ordinance to amend the police salary ordinance. What are we looking at here? I know a lot of.
Yeah, like, we kind of discussed it a little bit last month when we did the, we approved their salary ordinance, they were looking at going to 12-hour shifts. They've made the, they've made the decision to go ahead and do that, so this kind of goes with that, along with, I had the wrong amount down for the parking and code enforcement, so that's just update to the correct amount. And then we also reworded their longevity a bit, because it is possible for them to get lateral transfers that are not in the 77 Fund, but they are still certified officers. For instance, a sheriff's deputy, if they were to come work for the city, they are not 77 Fund members, but they are certified officers, so we wanted to keep the longevity the way it was prior for those types of officers.
And the reason for that?
Just to try to keep it fair among those officers that are coming. We've had, we've had a couple guys come over from the Sheriff's Department, and we don't think it'd be right for them not to get anything for their, their years of service, but we also want to make sure we get them into the 77 Fund and go that direction as well, so it's a matter of fairness more than anything else.
Danny, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Since they're going to 12 hours.
Yes.
Does that conflict at all with overtime after eight hours per day?
No, the, the police and fire departments are both under different rules when it comes to the FSLA or FLSA, Fair Labor Standards Act. They have a different category for public safety officers, so their, their overtime is completely different than what a normal 40-hour a week.
But for everybody else, after eight hours, it's time and a half, is that correct?
After 40 hours.
Okay, so.
After 40 hours in a week.
So it's not eight hours a day?
No, it's 40 hours in a week.
Thank you.
Good.
So just to update you to help Danny, Danny is going to a special seminar on the police and fire labor laws that I know he and Chief Schilling are planning to go to one of those here shortly, because it is complex.
Sounds like it.
The 1977 people and the fire and the police and our.
It's been a learning experience for me, for sure. I'd never had to deal with that before I started working for the city, so Chief Schilling and I are going down to Plainfield in February for a seminar. I'm sure that's going to help.
The police is confusing enough and fires is even more confusing. It's crazy.
EMS got that way, too.
I just, I appreciate the chief entertaining this along with Danny. I know that many within the department wanted discussion.
Yes.
And they were able to get it, and I spent some time with Sheriff Smith last week, and he's wishing the good. It's what the county has, and he said, my whole life, that's all I've known, is the 12-hour shift, and he was looking forward to seeing how we handle this, and it was all positive.
Is every officer required to go to 12 hours, and will there be any working eight hours?
The Patrol Division will all be going to the 12-hour shifts. They're the ones who really push for this to happen. Our detectives are obviously a little bit different schedule depending on what cases they're working and things like that, and then we also have our SROs that'll continue working the shifts that they're on. So we'll, we'll have about three or four different shifts down there.
Okay.
But the Patrol Division's the ones that are going to the 12-hour shifts.
So this is related to the patrol, but what we passed before will still be what the eight-hour shift schedule.
Yes, this is just an amendment to amend, like, their law, their off-shift differential. We had it at 4% for second shift and 2% for third shift.
Right.
We're going to a flat 3% for anybody who's working that night 12 hours. So this is just to amend the one that we've already passed.
Okay.
Good questions. It's the Patrol Division, admin, SRO, detective, it's different.
Yeah.
So what would their schedules look like, then, with their days off and stuff, like three days and then two days off, or how is that going to work? Do you know?
I know that, they showed me the plan, I don't know exactly how to explain it, but they, they have a plan in place, I've seen it. I believe it's like three on, two off, two on, three, it's something like that. I don't want to say exactly what it is, because I don't, really don't remember off the top of my head.
Will they be having more weekends off suited up to what they are now?
Yes, the reason that the Patrol guys would prefer this schedule is so that they can have every other weekend off. At this time, they're only getting one weekend every six weeks, so this will give them every other weekend off, so it's a, it's a work-life balance issue with those guys, and that's why they wanted to go to this, this schedule.
I'll bring Sheriff Smith up again. When I sat with him, Danny's been, I can't remember it either, but Sheriff Smith went right through it, right there in front of me. I mean, he was able to go right through it.
Yeah. They live that life, so it's, it's like me speaking French to you, it's not going to work.
I think the big thing is, like Lynn said, that they, or was said, that a weekend off every other weekend is just something that they're not getting. I mean, it's, for me, it would be very attractive versus waiting every six weeks.
It sounds like it's just another good tool in the toolbox to help us attract quality officers.
Good point.
Yeah, it's the first shift. We were, we're one of very few departments that are actually still working eight-hour shifts. Most departments have transitioned to the 12s and worked that more than not.
And I assume it's not going to cost a whole lot more?
I didn't break down any of the financial stuff, but Chief Widdakers assured me that his budget isn't going to change with this.
That's amazing.
In fact, I'm thinking it might cut down a little bit on overtime, especially for court dates when they have to go on, to court on their day off or whatever.
Yeah, there'll be some, there'll be some growing pains, I'm sure, but we'll get through them.
Can you say what time shift starts or ends?
They're going to be going 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and 6:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m.
I was wondering, it would be noon to midnight or 6:00 to 6:00?
No, we definitely wanted to make sure that they, that we had plenty of coverage on the busy time, which is usually like 2:00 to 5:00 in the afternoon, and then, you know, early morning from 6:00 to 9:00 is usually their busiest times, so we want to make sure that we had, had coverage over those times.
How do their total hours per week stack up?
They're still, so with the police department, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Lynn, 56 hours?
56 hours a week? I just know it's 171 in 28 days.
Yes, every 28 days, they get 171 hours, so they're, it's, it's not going to change that at all. It's just going to be the, the amount of time they work and then their time off will, it's going to equal itself all out.
And then that's when they get their overtime, is after their 171.
Right.
So a couple things I would add. The Board of Works recently approved purchasing new body cameras for the police officers, and amongst the really good things from that is the new batteries are supposed to be much better to make sure that they can record for their duration of a 12-hour shift so that, because that could be a problem with the current setup that they have, it might not have enough juice to get them through a 12-hour shift, but that's part of what the thought process is that went into the new body cameras. And then the second thing I would say, and this doesn't directly have to do this, but I learned this from the fire department, these, these shifts, I thought this was really clever, there's kind of an internal expectation that you show up early for your shift so that if something starts to happen, then the shift coming on takes over and takes care of it so that.
You're a good handoff.
It's a good handoff, so I thought that was very kind, the way the, the fire department works that out with one another, that there's just an internal expectation that if you start at 6:00 a.m., you get there before 6:00 a.m., or I think they may change at 7:00, but that you're ready to go so that you can take over for something, so that the shift leaving can leave for the day, so I thought that was nice of those men and women to do that.
Police department usually start a half an hour earlier. I know.
That's what they're currently doing right now.
When does this take place?
Technically, we're going to start 1st of January. Still working out all the bugs, but I think the chief's got the, got everybody ready to go for January 1st.
That'll be a good test.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion, we approve ordinance 2024-11-03.
Motion by Josh, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
A second by Jack. Any further discussion? Danny, you good? Danny?
Yes.
All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you.
And that'll, that'll be at the next meeting, too, for the second reading on that one.
I'm December 2nd.
December 2nd. December 2nd. The next item is another ordinance to amend the employee policy handbook. There has been a lot of work on a variety of fronts on this, and I want to actually thank this membership for your work as early as individually the springtime and summer. Danny has done an excellent job. My staff has helped me tremendously, and I'll have Danny highlight some of the major things that have happened. You'll see also, he's done a nice job listing it in his memo. Danny, what are we looking at?
Yes, so our current handbook was written. Yes, so our current handbook was written back in two thousand seventeen, I believe, and then there was an update in twenty twenty-two. So when, when Mayor, when Mayor Gross took over, he, he kinda gave me a, a warning and said, hey, this is gonna be our big project for the year. And we've worked pretty much the entire year on, on this project. So there was a lot of things that we wanted to update just to give our employees a little bit more, a little bit more love. We have a retention initiative that we're trying to, to keep moving forward where our turnover has went from about eleven percent in twenty-one, down, we're down to about seven percent now. So the good thing is, is that we're keeping our employees and they're not leaving us to go to other places. And this is just a little bit more towards that initiative to, to kind of work towards our employees. So everybody in the city has, has put work into this new handbook. And I want, want to thank the mayor and his staff, the council members that have all helped out and looked through this thing. Our department heads did an amazing job of taking, kind of taking surveys of their, of their people to find out what it is that, that we could do better for them. And they brought that back to us. We put it into a priority list and that's kind of where we started from. So the big things for this new handbook is, first off, we've amended the jury duty policy to pay employees for the time missed due to performing a civic duty. That was a high priority for the mayor. The way it was written before, they would get paid for a week.
It was a week or two.
Two weeks, maybe two weeks.
Okay, and if it went any longer than that, then there was nothing there to protect their wages. So we wanted to make sure that we, we take care of it. It doesn't happen very often that there's a trial that's gonna go that long. But in the case that it does happen, we don't want our employees worrying about paying the bills instead of taking care of the duty that we ask them to, to do, so.
And before Danny goes on, that was the first one. I think I've told several of you. If you go down to number eight, many minor updates for improved grammar, correct spelling and elimination of outdated terms. That's sort of where it started for me in January. I need to read it, privilege of being the new mayor. I want to make sure I know what's in the employee handbook. And again, I've signed off on it like you guys, but I thought I'm gonna go through it. And I started picking up some errors. I thought, boy, it could be worded a little bit differently, dated, that kind of thing. And then I started stumbling on things. And that was the first one that I thought, maybe we ought to talk about that. And then that just led to all the other items Danny here highlighting, another six items. So thanks, Danny.
Yeah, absolutely. One of the, the next things that we changed was previous handbook, employees could trade in sick time for personal time. But they were only able to get half of the hours that they traded in. So if they gave ten hours of sick time, they would get five hours of personal time. So in order to, to kind of remedy that, we've gone to where they will have personal time that they will earn and they'll have sick time. We won't do a transfer on that anymore. It'll just be, this is your personal time, this is your sick time. Kind of takes that end of year mess away from trying to convert hours from sick to personal and, and things of that nature, so. Bereavement time, we were discussing this and, and with the, the way that our society has gone global, not everybody's family members live ten miles down the road anymore like we used to in the past. So we wanted to make sure that everybody had the time to spend with family to, in that time of need. So we've, we've increased that to where bereavement time is five days for, for any of the, the family members that are listed in the, in the handbook, which are immediate family, mother-in-law, father-in-law, brothers, sisters, children, things of that nature. So that, that bereavement time will be five days instead of kind of the tiered three, two, one that we used to have. As you guys know, longevity has been very high on my list the last couple of years. I have preached it and preached it and preached it. Our folks that have been here and have stayed with the city and, and have given us, you know, their commitment, I want to make sure that we are giving back to them. So our vacation policy has changed to where the longer you're here, the more vacation time you're gonna get. And then that, that's tiered over every two years, I think, is when, when we rose it up. So at twenty-five years is when they will max out with six weeks of vacation, so. Again, our sick leave bank, if you worked for more than ten years, you could get paid out half of whatever was in your sick bank if you left the city. What we've done is we've increased the number of hours that people can bank. That way, if they, there is a, a need, if they get really, we've got a couple of employees who are battling some, some health issues now. The, the six hundred hours that we were allowing them to bank may not be enough to get them through what they need to get through. So we've increased the, the bank hours. And then we tiered the payout for longevity. So if you've been here ten years and you decide to leave, you get, you get half, just like it was before. At fifteen years, it goes up a little bit more, seventy-five percent, I think maybe. And then at twenty-five years, we would pay out the match. So that's a little bit of a change with the, with the sick bank. We put in and updated on-call policy. We've got several people who, who work on-call and they do a rotation, mainly the, the wastewater treatment plant. In case one of those lift stations goes down, they have to get, get on it and get that back up to keep that flowing. So a lot of that stuff that they have to work on now, they can actually do remotely, right? So that was, the policy was before any of that stuff could happen. So now, if they get a call and they can fix it remotely, we're gonna go ahead and compensate them accordingly and give them an hour pay if, if that's what, what they have to do. Because even though they may not have to come in for it, they're still taking their time to, to do work for the city. So we want to make sure that that's, that's compensated. And then we made sure that once they got the call and they come in, that, that's when their clock would start, instead of waiting until they got the wastewater to clock in. Like the time, clock will start when they get the call and then it will end when they are, when they are done with that call. So if they decide to go home or come in, do the job and then stop at a birthday party for three hours, they're not getting paid for that three hours. It's, once the job's complete, that's when their time's cut off. So it's, it's just a little bit more standardized, a little bit more employee friendly. And it's gonna help those remote worker, those on-call guys feel like it's worth doing for them, so. And then we added three new policies. These are all new laws that were passed last year. The two of them are the Pregnant Workers' Fairness Act and the Providing Urgent Maternal Protections. Those were laws that were passed last year at the federal level. We just wanted to get them in our, our handbook so that we had that covered. And then we put in a temporary telework policy. We found out that sometimes people can do some stuff from home and they don't actually have to be here. So if there's an emergency where they have a sick child or something of that nature, some people, it's hard to get through the day without calling them and, and getting their input and things of that nature. So there are a few that would be able to use this policy, but it's, you know, it's very detailed in what they have to do to be able to get that permission to do that telework. And it's, it's only on an emergency, short-term basis. We're not gonna have anybody working from home on a permanent basis of any kind, so. And then, like the mayor said, the many minor updates, improved grammar, corrected spelling, elimination of outdated terms. We had a part in our, where we were talking about pagers. And I haven't seen pagers since I was in high school, so. This is a little bit outdated. So we, we tried to get all those terms and things of that nature updated. So a lot of, a lot of big changes. You know, I've, I've been excited about this for a while. I've been on the mayor's, like, let's get it done, let's get it done. I'm excited because I, I know how pro-employee all these changes are. And I'm excited to be able to go around and let our employees know, hey, this, this is for you guys. This is what our council and our mayor think of you and, and appreciate all that you do. So this is what we're gonna do for you. So with that, any questions?
Danny, one of the things that you didn't say, but I'm pretty sure everybody on the council knows, is that our employment attorney.
Yes.
Did take a look at the language. You highlighted the last draft for, just to make sure everybody knows it.
It was just some, some legal language to, to make it more legally updated to protect the city. But it did not change any of the, of the meat and potatoes of the book.
I just appreciated Danny making sure that that also did happen, that our employment attorney and his firm looked at it just to make sure that any of the changes were in the right direction.
Correct, yes.
Is there gonna be an emphasis when department heads conduct annual reviews to make employees aware of this document and a little bit more?
So our, our plan is, once, once this is passed, right, once, once you guys pass it for me, I'm gonna go department by department and, and have a meeting with every department and go over the changes in the book. We'll make sure that everybody has a new printed bound copy of it that they get to take home and, and keep for themselves. But the, the annual review process will also be changing in the future to kind of coincide with this. Something we, we actually started, it's already starting to be implemented, but yes, they will, they will definitely go through this. They're gonna go through total compensation and, and benefit. Those have been put out to the department heads. So they have those to be able to do their annual reviews with as well. So all those things that, that we've discussed and, and wanted to implement are going forward.
I mean, I know it'll take a little more time, but if employees aren't aware of this, it still doesn't do any good.
It's not a benefit if they don't know it.
Right, right, yeah. And everybody's talking. They're, they're all excited. They, they know, you know, kind of the road that we're going down and, and how we want to get there. And we have an amazing group of employees that I don't know of anywhere else that you could go to, to get a crew like we got. And that's why I want to work as hard as I can to keep them happy and keep them here.
Danny's been real patient along with the departments also. I was bringing this up all the way back last spring. I said, we need to be very cautious, respect this council.
Yes.
And not say, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that and all that kind of stuff. You probably heard me a hundred times. This is a discussion item. This is something that we are considering. It has not been passed yet. And Danny has done a great job. The department heads have done a great job of
Yes.
trying to keep it in the proper hands until your consideration, which is where we are now, and maybe vote in favor, so. But that will be happening sooner than later, if, if and when you consider voting or moving forward with this. I say that right, Danny?
Yes, yeah, the, sooner the better.
From where I sit, I think it's gonna be a best practice that every employee's gonna sign something saying that they've received the new employee handbook.
Yeah, there, there is a signature.
And be informed that if they should ever lose their employee handbook, there'll be additional copies available from Danny or from Montana. They should come get one.
Yes, absolutely. And that's, that's part of our onboarding process too with new people is they get a handbook. Montana goes through it with them. And then there's a signature page that they sign that says, yeah, it's, it's actually in the, in the books that you guys have. The last page is the signature page acknowledging that they, they have the handbook and understand what's in it.
It could go on canopy as well, couldn't it?
Yes, it'll be on canopy as well.
So it, therefore, it says, therefore, be ordained by the common council of the city of Warsaw. Any attached employee handbook is hereby adopted, but are you going to provide a copy to go with that ordinance?
Yes.
Well, I'm excited about how this goes along with our changes in our salary ordinances and our longevity pay. And I think the whole package looks awesome, so.
We, we've done a lot of, a lot of work this year. And I, I appreciate all the help that I've gotten from you guys and, and the department heads and the employees. It's been, it's been a, a rough road sometimes, but it's been fun. And now we're able to start seeing the fruits of that labor and it's really exciting.
Danny's aware of it. You're aware of it. The department heads are seeing it. Maybe some employees are aware of it, but we're hoping as soon as it does, everybody's gonna realize, oh my goodness, this is positive. It'll energize our workforce and then back to the cost of retention, I think Mike has said it, are far less than not retaining employees. I forget how you've said it, but discussions you and I have had, and I think the department heads, Danny will tell you very, very true.
Absolutely, yes.
At one, at one time I heard it was said that an increase in salary, the effects of that on an employee last about six weeks. But I suspect something like this lasts all year long.
Absolutely, yeah.
Every time, every time it touches them.
The, we're, I keep saying, but we're trying to, to increase that work-life balance. You know, we want them to come to work and work hard and get the job done, but we also want them to, to have the ability to spend time with family and enjoy that time when they're with their family. So this is gonna go a long way towards being able to help with that work-life balance. We, you know, we all know we can't always pay the most in town, but I think we are headed in the right direction of, of taking care of employees well enough that they don't want to leave us for another quarter an hour.
And needless to say, this is always going to be a work in progress.
I'm, I'm sure that I will be back with amendments as soon as we get it out there and everybody starts reading it. Because I, I promise you, I'm not perfect and this document is not gonna be perfect, so I anticipate that we'll be doing some amendments.
It's hard after you read it a hundred times to not just read what you think it says.
Right. But again, it's, it's a great foundation. It's a great starting point. Now, most of the old handbook is still intact within this. It's just, there's some big changes in some key places that I'm super excited about.
Well, I appreciate the mayor taking an interest in this and your hard work. And you reached out to all of us. We put in our two cents worth. And I know I was up in your office several times asking about things, so it's, it's been a group effort.
It really has.
I think it's, it's good. It's good for the employees of the city, which means it's good for the city. Yeah, we're only as good as our employees.
This is an ordinance.
I will make a motion, Mayor, that we pass ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eleven dash oh two.
There's a motion to approve by Mike. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Go ahead. There's a second by, maybe we're not paper scissors. By Diane, yeah, by Diane. Any further discussion?
Danny, thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Danny. Lot of work. All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you, Danny. Appreciate it.
I'm sorry?
Any other matters? Any questions from anyone?
Go Tigers.
Yeah. Congratulations, Tigers. Yes, congratulations and continue, right. Lot of fun.
Hey, I'm the council member. Have any of you missed the walking tour? If you go to the city website, find the cemetery top left corner, you can watch all the country tour.
Cool.
Oh, that's cool.
Yeah, thank you. Oh, it's, okay. I did not know that. Okay. Thanks, Al. Incredible.
That's the one that was in September? Well, we can't, I was gone. I'll go look at it.
Okay. No, I don't mind that at all.
Any other items?
Yeah, I guess we got one more.
Okay, thank you, Jack.
I, I wasn't gonna bring this up because I, I didn't get it on the, into the agenda quickly enough for everybody to take, take a look at it. But this, this past year, the council approved a grant of ARPA funds, as you all remember, to the CCAC in the amount not to exceed forty-six thousand nine hundred sixteen dollars. in the amount, uh, not to exceed forty-six thousand nine hundred sixteen dollars. Two invoices were submitted and paid to the CCAC in the amount of twenty-three, five, forty-eight each. Half of the grant should have been twenty-three, four, fifty-eight. This amounted to a total overpayment of a hundred and eighty dollars. It was discovered late in October when, uh, Quirk Treasurer and I met to reconcile the balance of our total funds. Therefore, uh, I recommend, submit for your approval, an amendment to suspend our ARPA application policy, which states we will pay up to eighty percent of a project and increase the grant application by a hundred and eighty dollars. And this, this amounts to, uh, point zero zero four percent of the entire, uh, grant. This was just the easiest way to, to, to handle it. Um, and that would bring the total grant, uh, to forty-seven, nine oh six. And I'll entertain any, any questions that you might have. I really wanted to get this in, in front of you, um, but due to council's, uh, suggestion that we go ahead and get tied up now.
Since it's such a small amount, I'm definitely in favor of doing it. Very reasonable.
Do we need to vote or just acknowledge it?
Yeah, I think, I think Jergen made a motion to approve increasing the, the gift to the CCAC by a hundred and eighty dollars. If anybody would like to second that.
I, I did add in there to make sure, just to cover all of our bases, that we're, we're suspending our original rules of eighty percent, just to cover that as well.
Good point.
So.
And you could say it's in the spirit of the season.
Yes, most definitely.
Jerry, do you second that as well?
Make that a part of the motion. And again, as Jack said, best path to moving forward is this, is doing this. So we appreciate that. So there's a motion and a second. Thanks, Jack, for your work on that. Uh, motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Thank you, Jack.
I will give you a little bit of an update as well. We've got, uh, council has given us some MOUs so that we can income these expenses that have not been paid this year, that will be carried over into next year. Uh, and we're currently getting signatures on each one of those as well, just to make sure that the funds are still there. Because it was all supposed to be spent by, by the end of this year.
It's obligated by the end of this year?
Yeah, it's obligated by the end of this year. And the encumbrance will take care of that. So.
Yeah, we're anticipating having a busy day on Friday, December the sixth, that our Board of Works meeting. I think there's going to be a, uh, several agreements and memorandums of understanding for approving some money to be gifted or spent for services on that day. So try to get out ahead of it. December's always. Lynn gets a particular way sometimes in December. So.
You're smiling over there.
Yeah.
December's not here yet.
We're not tied up.
But her and I both appreciate trying to get this done in a timely fashion. So it's not all last minute, end of December, trying to get all of our ducks in a row. So thank you.
Anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. We are adjourned. Thank you. All right, turn my phone back on.